Just a challenge getting here, that's for sure.
Good.
Seems like the light, light coming from downtown, right? So I guess that light here on the first, sixty-four going east. It doesn't let see the cars go.
We're now going to open up the meeting of the joint. Boy, that didn't take you long. Good lord.
That's what I said. Oh, thank you.
Welcome to the convention center.
Yeah.
Okay, we're getting there. Again, welcome everybody to this late afternoon work, not really work session, but a joint meeting wherein the county staff will be giving a presentation of where we are at with the infamous Lincoln Pool. Our goal here, oh, there we go. Whoa. Hello. You know, as I've said, the staff will open up with the presentation of where we are with the Lincoln Pool. After that presentation, we will open it up to any public comment that is here where people would like to speak regarding the Lincoln Pool. And then upon the conclusion of the public comment, we will open it up to the commissioners and the city commissioners as well for their comments. And then at that point, we will adjourn the meeting, go back. Hopefully, the city will go back and meet with their folks as the county will go back and then we will hopefully negotiate and get back together. And if we need to have another one of these meetings in the next month or whenever is appropriate, then we will. But hopefully, after we go through the presentation today, we'll all have some food for thought on what the options are. And then we can try to go from there and ultimately get what has always been one of my goals since I've been on the commission is getting this Lincoln Park Pool built. It's been in the works for, well, decades at a minimum. Let's not turn it into centuries. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ed and he will introduce the speakers, Tom, and so forth to go through the presentation. Then again, we will open it up for public comment.
Good evening. We're looking at this as an informational meeting to provide all the elected officials information on where we are with this project. It's, as the chair said, we've been at this, in my records, I was looking back in the early 2000s for discussions between the city and the county about a pool. And then we ran into a problem of all getting poor. And during the poor stages, about the only thing we could do is build a splash park, which wasn't exactly anybody's dream of what the pool was supposed to be. We're now coming out of the recession in the last couple of years. Amendment one failed, which we're all kind of thankful about that one. And we'd like to move forward on the pool. So we proceeded with doing a procurement based on what we called the vision. And the vision was a competitive, complex, but more importantly, a facility to teach children how to swim. That's where, and my records show that's where it all started, is how do we teach children to swim? And we've been morphed into the fact that we needed a competitive pool, so we looked at that. We went out for a procurement. The procurement results came in. We were a bit surprised by the results and we're going to take you through those this evening. And the question is, where are we going to go from here? When we got the results in, we didn't like them. We spent, and we didn't want to share all that information with everybody right before the Christmas holidays. And so we just sat on that over the holidays. But during the holidays, we looked at, what's an alternative? And you'll see an alternative presented by Tom here shortly. And then we'd like to see where folks would like to go from here. So it's informational at the end of this meeting. We would figure the city will go back and chat about what you heard tonight. The county commissioners will go back and have a meeting, workshop or a general meeting to talk about where they want to go. And then we should come to some consensus sooner rather than later about how it is we want to proceed to get to the finish line of having a facility for the children north of the river to be able to swim and for the high school students to practice. And if we can get there, we would be oh-so thankful. So with that, pending any questions, I'm going to ask Tom to make a presentation. You have a PowerPoint in front of you that was prepared for this purpose, to make sure that everybody has the same information as we go into the next round of how do we get to the finish line? So with that, Tom, if you'll take it away.
Thank you, sir. My name's Tom Yager. I'm with Property Management, Manatee County. I'm the Construction Services Manager. Angela Hansa's with me. She's the project manager for this project. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to take you through the project background a little bit. There'll be a couple of slides about that. We'll look at the conceptual site plan comparison between the $3 million pool and a $7 million pool. We're going to talk about the RFP and the original scope of services and what we expected we would see in our $3 million option. The budget option for a reduced scope at $3 million, the budget option in detail on a revised and modified $5 million option, which is the option that Ed referenced that we came up with over the Christmas holiday. And then I have a slide on the city-county funding breakdown that if, we'll talk about at the end because as we all know, it comes down to money. So that's where we'll end up. So with the project background, the original RFP scope of services that county requested was for an eight-lane USA Swimming certified competition pool. That would have been eight lanes, 25 yards by 25 meters, and would have accommodated or would accommodate high school, college, and international or Olympic swimming. There would be a learn-to-swim pool with a zero entry. That pool is about 2,000 square feet and a zero entry is an area where somebody can step into the pool in ankle-deep water and walk gradually down into water that gets up to about four feet. So and that's, that's the learn-to-swim pool. It also included shade structures and some accessories there, benches and things like that. There was a new support building, which would be the required restrooms, locker rooms, showers. There was an office for pool staff and a little bit more office space for some administrative offices. The existing splash park would have been upgraded with an additional, up to three or four additional features. The splash park currently is designed with the pumping system and the pool deck area to allow for an addition of just splash park features. We don't need to expand the pool deck. All of the feature attachments are in the deck already and the pool pumps are there to support those features. And we were also talking about improved off-street parking, which would have been some additional paved parking that would have been adjacent to and to serve the pool area and the recreation area. We had three add alternates, actually two add alternates. One was for a main pool dive well, which would allow for one meter and three-meter diving. And we have a shared pool amenities, which are a support kitchenette, some space for lockers and tower showers on the pool deck and things like that. So that's what we were asking for in the original RFP. We are currently at 30% design. And right now, what was presented to Manatee County for the Lincoln Park Pool by the design team, John Swift, was a one combination four-lane pool with a zero entry. So it would be a combination four-lane practice pool. It would not be certified by USA Swimming for any type of competition. It would be seventy-five, excuse me, 25 yards long so that we could use that as a practice facility as an overflow if we needed it. And the new support building size was reduced to a minimum program requirements and code compliance. So there's not any extra storage space. There's no extra room for offices. There's a single office. There's just enough restrooms and showers to accommodate what we would need to use the pool in accordance with health, the health department's standards. The cost of this is estimated at $3 million. The slide you see now on the left-hand side, this drawing was produced and provided by the construction manager during the RFP process and was represented to be what we could afford for five, for $3 million. This was our $3 million vision and we were told we could get this for $3 million. When we actually get to 30% plans, on the right is the $3 million pool option. So that's the combination pool, the reduced size of the restrooms and office spaces. There would be no parking or anything there. So that's a one-pool design rather than a two-pool, two-pool design. So let me get to what we get for the $7 million option, which is presented to us as what we proposed in the original scope of services, was a main pool, again, eight lanes, 25 meters by 25 yards, which is a competition pool of about 6,000 square feet. And it would accommodate all three, high school, college, and international swimming events. One new support pool entry, which was a zero entry, 2,000 square feet, and it would allow for about 38 individuals to learn to swim there. A support building of 3,400 square feet, which included some office space, storage space, the lockers and the showers that would be required for the two-pool system, and some additional office spaces. The splash park upgrades, we would add additional three features and a canopy to the splash park, the shared pool amenities, aprons, covered areas, decks, deck showers, those types of things, and then the related site work and design. What was not included in the $7 million option is the add alternate for a dive well, an add alternate for additional pool amenities, which are exterior lockers, spectator seating, and those types of things. The next slide shows the $3 million budget option, which is the pool that our construction manager tells us we can afford, is a combination learn-to-swim pool with four-lap lanes and it's 25 yards. This would not accommodate international or high school or college sporting events. This would be a practice pool. We have a new support building at 1,840 square feet, which is the bare minimum that would be required by the health department to open the pool based on the bathing load that we have. And the site work is the code compliant design and construction fees. It does not include splash park upgrades, a shared pool, excuse me, parking, sight lighting, furniture fixtures, and equipment. So after we got our heads together to try to figure out what we could offer to the boards as an option that was not $3 million and not $5 million, or excuse me, $7 million, was a $5 million pool option and still has two pools. So what we came up with for $5 million is one main pool, which is USA Swimming certified. It's an eight-lane, 25-yard competition pool, which would accommodate high school and college. It would not accommodate international swimming. A new support pool with a zero entry, which is 2,000 square feet. A newer support building, which is in size slightly larger than the $3 million option, but smaller than the $7 million option, but still meets all the health, health department requirements for restrooms, showers, and other amenities. And it also includes the site work and design. What it does not include is it does not include asphalt parking. It does not include the splash park upgrades. It does not include furniture fixtures and equipment or pool certification for international or Olympic standards. Our last slide is the city-county funding breakdown. At the $3 million budget, there were discussions that the county would contribute $2,150,000 towards the $3 million pool and that the city would contribute $850,000 toward the $3 million pool. That breakdown by percentage is approximately 72% by the county and 28% by the city. If we follow the same contribution percentages for the $5 million pool, we would be looking at $3,583,500 from the county and $1,416,500 from the city. If we determine that the $7 million budget is the one that we want to go with and following the same contribution percentages, the county's option would be about $5 million and the city's contribution would be about $2 million. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Tom. Before we open it up to comment, there's a few facts that need to be known because we, in having this discussion internally, we brought the folks that understand pools, which is Charlie Hunziker and his staff. And when you get into the question of community swimming, which is children's learning to swim or families going out to enjoy a day at the pool, it appears that people think there'd be a conflict with the competitive side. What we found out from the staff is the summer swimming, where the kids, for the most part, would be looking to swim between the months of May and September, are not the months that competitive swimming takes place. Competitive swimming takes place during the school year, for the most part. And so the fact that there would be conflict between the two is, is not a relevant issue for the most part. Secondly, the, the number of competitive events we currently host in Manatee County is approximately 12 a year. We've looked back over the last several years. That's out of 365 days in the year, that's 12 days. There's roughly eight of those at GT Bray Park and four at John Marble Park. So it's not like we have a great competitive spirit because there's communities surrounding us that are into the pool business. They have more pools, they have more competitive pools. They've incurred the cost over the years to build those facilities. So to think we could be competitive in attracting big school or big university meets, we've just not been there traditionally. It would take a lot more money than this facility. But we think that it's important for the high school students north of the river to have an opportunity to train, and we think a training facility is important for them. But the most important thing we want to chat with you about is the, how do we provide for families to have a swimming opportunity north of the river during the months when they most want to swim? Again, there's no dive well in this proposal because we, the staff from the Parks Department says the dive well we have at GT Bray, there's only 15 divers in all of Manatee County that use that facility. So it's not exactly a hot issue in the county to have a number of dive wells around the county. And then there's the operating cost of a pool. A pool costs roughly about $400,000 a year to operate a pool of this nature. And even if we were to get into the competitive business of trying to recruit competitive events, we probably couldn't earn $20,000 in a year from those events, let alone to offset the $400,000 cost we incur to operate the pool. Those are just facts we need to get on the table as we talk about this. When we went through and we were surprised by that, and I've used that word twice now, the proposal, we knew that no one, no one is going to like that $3 million option. So we, we spent some time over the holidays looking at a $5 million option, but that is probably a discussion item, what are we willing to spend and what are we really, really want in the community? And we leave that to the elected officials to have a bit of discussion about what's on your mind tonight so that we can go back and the city council have a discussion, the board of county commissioners have a discussion, and we'll see where we go from here and what's the final plans for making sure this pool happens sooner rather than later. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay. Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Tom, for the presentation. And as I mentioned, at this point, I'd like to open it up to public comments of those who are not here. I'm not sure where we're going to.
There's a mic there. A mic there. Hold on, we're back here. So I would say just line up and take your turns and have three minutes of each to report your situation.
Good evening. I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody. I think I'm one of the senior pastors in Manatee County. When I was saved at a very early age at the, what now Brooke Clements Pool, my girlfriend at the time, who's now my wife after 53 years, we were baptized in that pool. And I enjoyed it because I lived in Bradenton. Since I came to Palmetto, and we don't have a swimming pool, there were different officials as well as community persons that wanted to have a pool that would serve the people. We understand that there are people who can afford their own pool, but the majority of people cannot. And when we came around to hearing the first proposals, we were set on the $7 million budget pool. And that's hard to shake. It really is. And so the $5 million is kind of a, I guess it's a spiritual thing in me, to give a little to get a lot. And so I believe that it would benefit our community if we can get that and have as far as middle school, high school, and families during the summer. If you go to Lincoln Park now and see the activities that are there and come down 29th Street where my church is and see the basketball court in the summer and how busy it is that we've provided for our community, it will be well-used. So we're asking at least at this part, if you will support the $5 million budget, then I can swallow very hard and say, I won't fight against getting the $7 million. Thank you.
My name is MacArthur Sellers and I am the president of the Washington Park CDC. I used to be an advisory board member for the Palmetto CDC. I'm also a former pastor and a resident of Palmetto. And I'm always concerned of the switcheroo. I'll just be point blank, okay? When we look at our community, and I heard the report, but I'm under the understanding that you're building more schools northside. I'm under the understanding that the population is growing. I'm under the understanding that if it's available, more people will abide themselves to utilize it. You only have 12 folks diving perhaps because that's all you have available. When you have more, people get more and do more. So let's not be short-sighted. Instead of going for the $5 million, which I understand is a lot of money, let's shoot for the $7 million for what's best for the community as a whole. And I understand it's, and I got to put it out there, it's an Afro-American community and perhaps that's, that may be a hindrance, but let's look beyond that and say, what's best for the overall community and can we give the best product possible? Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Betty Sales Rose and it's been a long time for us over here in Palmetto, Florida, north of the river. We always get the neck of everything. When it comes to us, you never want to do anything for us. Now, listen, I'm with Reverend Sellers. Why are you going to drop it down to $5 million? Go with the $7 million. I think we earned this. Now, I remember years ago when my brother was alive, he said, that's what we need. We do need a pool here, see more sales over here in Palmetto. And we should have been at a pool. But I guess he didn't live to see the little splash pool. Now, I was very discouraged by the splash pool over there to Lincoln Park. We deserve better. Now, I know we have the money. We should work hard to try to get this pool built. Not only because it's over in the northern neighborhood, it for everybody to visit it and see, say, hey, Palmetto can shine too. Now, I could go way back now because I do keep up because my brother learned me this, that when y'all put the effort through for GT Bray, y'all got it done. When y'all change it to a marble pool, well, nothing's safe. Y'all went and pushed for it. So you all, everybody here, city, county, you need to push together. We need that pool. We really do need it. It is not only going to be served by minority, which I am one, it's going to be served for all races, all people of color, everybody. So you need to get on board, workshop, and try to put it in place because we are somebody. Palmetto been down all. Because I'll never forget, and when y'all built the civic center, it is in Palmetto, but not the civic center, the Manatee County Civic Center. But it's in, you know, bringing, you know, you know, it should have been Palmetto Civic Center because you're right here in our neighborhood. So we got to get together and work together to try to get something done. We really do. And I'm saying, no, I want to go for $7 million. I'm not going to go for something little and people come here and say, I don't want to swim in that. And you go over there to a pool over in Bradenton, GT Bray, it got everything you need. No, I'm going for $7 million. So we should work together. That's the bottom line. We got to work together, the city and the county. We got to come up with something to get this pool built. Not with no five, seven. If you have to go further, you have to go further because we need a pool over here. And yes, we do need to have one for some of the kids to learn how to swim. I'll never forget, when I was coming up, it was segregation days. Okay, I had to go over to the Bradenton Pool, East Bradenton and learn because you die for the pennies. But we don't have to do that no more. And thank you for letting me talk this little bit about $7 million.
My name is Henry Lawrence. I, I don't have a whole lot to say, but I, I agree. I think that we should not short-change this project. We should go for the $7 million. I'm understanding that the operating budget would be $400,000 based on this, on the $3 million, $5 million, $7 million. Am I to understand, am I understanding that it would be the same operating cost? And my thoughts on this, if we, if we, if we build a pool on the standards of international level, I know it said the operating, the money's coming in, it wouldn't be but a few thousand dollars, but there's a possibility that there are other opportunities may come as a result of us having a first-class Olympic-style pool facility here, which would not just benefit Palmetto, but would benefit the whole county. And it's, it's time, and these things are starting to come, but for so long, this district has been neglected on a major scale. And things are finally starting to see, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and I like to say, let's don't let that light stop shining. Let's make that light shine brighter. Let's get these things done. Also, the Canale Road, all these things have been neglected, and we're finally on a course of doing this. Let's don't short-change it. Let's seek other opportunities to raise funds with this facility so that it can help subsidize the cost of operating it. I'm not speaking from a standpoint of someone that has expertise in the area, but I'm just speaking from a standpoint of what I saw. And if the operating budget is going to be $400,000 regardless of what size it is, then let's, let's make some other things happen. And that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you. God bless y'all. Happy New Year to everybody.
If not, then we will move forward to those commissioners that would like to speak. Can you just raise your hand and put a list behind you?
Put the mic there. Got to move them around a little bit for everyone to get them.
I just have a couple of questions. One thing I don't see and I haven't heard is how many people can swim in the pools that we're looking at here? I mean, it, I realize we're talking about being able to practice your swimming, but it doesn't look like it's very large. I can't tell by the drawing, how many people can get in these pools to swim? How many kids, how many adults that are just from Palmetto or the surrounding areas can get in this pool to enjoy it? $3 million, $5 million, and $7 million?
Madam, the, in the $3 million pool, we can fit approximately 68 swimmers. That's the modified pool. In the $7 million budget, we have the 25-meter by 25-yard pool and we have the reduced square footage, 2,000-square-foot pool for learn-to-swim. And in the off-season, when we would be able to open swim in the competition pool, it would hold 161 bathers. And in the smaller pool, it would hold 38 bathers. That's, that's the capacity. It, in the $5 million pool, the capacity would be slightly smaller in the competition pool. I don't have that exact number, but it's a 25-yard by eight-lane rather than a 25-yard by 25-meter. So you may lose a little bit of capacity, but I wouldn't think a whole lot. And the learn-to-swim pool is the same size, so there'd be 38 swimmers there.
Okay. I think another thing that concerns me in, in looking at the three, five- I think another thing that concerns me in looking at the three, five, and seven, there's so many things that aren't included that are kind of necessary, like shaded areas, parking, furniture. I mean, so even though we look at three, five, or seven, those three options don't really include a lot of what we're gonna need because you can't have parents there sitting on the side in the sun. You need some shade. So, I mean, have we looked at that thoroughly to figure out what it might? I guess where I'm going with this, and you know, Mr. Sellers, I've heard you speak so many times, and Henry, and you know, the thing of it is, is that this board, the county commission, a year or two ago, brought this up because we wanted to get this pool built. It is our hope to build, we want a pool in Palmetto. And let me tell you, there was some fighting that went on to try and have it in Palmetto at Lincoln Park. I know the mayor can vouch for all that because I know she was at the meetings. So we want to get this done. This is not something that we don't want to do. It's not something we want to do halfway. We want to make sure it's big enough and good enough for the people to enjoy and swim in. Reverend Lawrence, you know, you know me, so I mean, that's just the way it is. So I think another thing that bothers me too, that I think we need to look into, is this $400,000 maintenance a year. There's no way it can be the same amount of maintenance if we have two pools of different sizes, you know, the three million, five million, and seven million. I find it hard to believe it would be exactly the same. Is that right? Am I understanding you?
You understood me to quote an estimate that was given for the $7 million pool. At the $5 million level, it would be something less than 400, and then at the $3 million level, it would be something less than five million level. I can't give you those exact numbers, but it wouldn't ever be more than $400,000 a year is our estimate. So again, something smaller would be a lesser operational cost.
And are all these pools, do they all include heaters so that they could be open year round for swimmers? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just curious, and maybe I, I don't know where we came up with two pools. I never remember in any of our meetings us talking about two pools. But that's neither, I guess, here nor there. But what I would like to see is, we need to figure out, and I want to hear from the district commissioner, we need to figure out a way to be able to get the best pool with all the amenities that we need so that if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, I guess is what I'm saying. And I don't know that the seven million, or the five, as we're seeing here with two pools, is going to be able to do that for us. So I guess it is something for me that I still have a lot of questions even after this presentation, that I think we have a lot of questions, or at least I do, on why two pools, and could we not perhaps go with one bigger pool and get the other amenities in there for the same amount of money? I'm curious about that. I don't know. I don't know where we came up with two pools, so. Can you answer that? Can you answer that for me?
I'm not sure what the question was.
Where did we come up with two pools?
With the five and the seven million.
Because I don't remember that being part of our discussion on our board, anyway. Maybe I'm wrong, but...
As part of the visioning process, we met with the board of county commissioners and they asked us to develop...
I'm one of those.
...or pools. And we were also directed then to, staff was directed to work with the city of Palmetto to come up with some vision of what we wanted to see. And part of that visioning was a competition pool and a Learn to Swim pool.
Oh, okay. So it came up actually not so much from our board. I got it. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Bellamy?
Okay, I want to take my time and get through this. There's a couple of things that, for the record, we need to make sure that we're out there, not to disrespect anyone, but we have a responsibility as community leaders to make sure that we put any project together. And if we are going to put our county stamp on this, we need to make sure we do it the right way. One of the things that I'm concerned about is our mindset here. It seems like taxpayers north of the river are begging to be served. And I don't want my mic to go out because I want everybody to be clear with the things that I'm about to say. It seems like taxpayers north of the river are begging to be served. That's the first thing. And unfortunately, some of my interpretation coming from the county administrator is less persuasive as far as more reasons not to based on the money instead of us having ability as county commissioners, the ability to direct and approve what he come up with. So I think we need to look at that approach totally different as far as county commissioners, that we need to make sure that we come up with this money and everybody has a role. Now, the terminology accountability has come up within talking to some other people. And I'm sure that means the city of Palmetto has to be accountable for their part as well as the county. My concern is the mindset of this entire project. We have an opportunity to do something very unique where we can put our stamp on this pool, not just for recreation, for recreation, education, and competition. We have an opportunity on that, all right? With the taxpayer's dollars. And that opportunity highlights a couple of things. It gives the taxpayer dollars to, opportunity to serve the taxpayers and not just North River. Please, please, change your mindset. Operate outside the box. Have an opportunity to have an innovative thought within you. Don't just limit it to the point that the only ones that's going to take and visit this pool is the city of Palmetto and the people from Palmetto. If we do this the right way, if we do this the right way, the taxpayer's dollars should do two things. It should serve the taxpayer and it should attract not just individuals north and south of the river, but from the community and other counties abroad if we do it the right way. I think, based on some of the current conversations and everything that has taken place, me right now where I stand as a county commissioner, I'm truthfully embarrassed. And the reason why I'm saying that I'm embarrassed, it seems like we're struggling to do what's best for an area. And I think every area, every project in the county should be served with our best foot forward. And if we liking those amenities, I think we have an obligation to take and ask the county administrator to see, hey, what are our options? And we need to go and find those funds. It's public record. It's public record. And I'm not trying to offend anybody. I'm not trying to offend anybody, but it's public record. The county has a billion-dollar operating budget. And we're talking about $7 million. And if you do the math, I'm sorry the way I'm calculating it, I'm embarrassed. And the reason why I wanted to speak is because I challenge each and every one of you all to have an innovative mindset on this. I know this is a workshop, but we have a responsibility because when the project takes place, the city of Palmetto and their commissioners, their name's gonna be on there, the county of Manatee, the commissioners, our names will be there. What are we leaving behind? What are we saying that we want to do north of the river to make sure we impact that community? We don't want to say we just want a recreation pool. How about the education opportunity? How about the competitive opportunity? There's a lot of opportunities, and if we do it the right way, if we do this the right way, we can take and highlight that particular community. You have four to six hotels within a three to five mile radius out there, as well as a mall, and we have a movie theater that's coming up. How about we think outside the box and use this pool and opportunity to attract people to our area?
Well said.
Commissioner Smith, City of Palmetto.
Commissioner Smith, City of Palmetto. What I'm looking at here is, first of all, my motion was for a competition pool. That's what my motion was for when I made my motion. And I think everybody from the city of Palmetto know what my motion was, for a competition pool. Now, I think Mr. Brian Williams want that. We want to stick to that, a competition pool, that's what we want. I think we got the means here to have a competition pool. This is just not for the African-American community. We have Hispanics that live in the area. We have Caucasians that live in the area. This is a mixed community. Now, what I'm looking at is, I think everybody should get together, city, county, and make this happen. And I want to be straight to the point. We, as the people of this community and of the county, okay, you're gonna build some more pools. I hope you ain't gonna build a pool, that's a competition pool, after you leave from north of the river, and then build one. I hope that don't happen. So actually, I think all of us should get together and we should build a competition pool right there in Lincoln Park. And I don't see no reason why it can't be. I don't know why we ain't here discussing this right here. I really don't. Because I know the county got the money, and I think the city can get some more money to help. We want a competition pool, city of Palmetto. We want our pool to look just like GT Bray's on, or better. We got kids that are coming up that want to learn how to swim. We got kids that coming up that want to learn how to dive. We need this pool for our children. This is for the children. It's not really for us to sit in here and talk about, can we get the money? We know we can get the money, so let's do it. Let's all get together and stop being sitting up here and talking about, we having a meeting about this pool, and let's do the seven million because we got the means to do it, and let's do it. We need the pool. City of Palmetto need that pool, and it'd be actually for the whole county. Competition pool, that's what we need. You're gonna be building more high schools. Community's gonna be getting bigger and bigger. You're gonna need this pool, and everybody need this pool, especially the city of Palmetto. We don't have one. Thank you.
Commissioner Whitmore? I've been here a long time, and I remember in the other room, some of us, probably Brian and I are the only ones that remember when Larry Bustle was the mayor, and we talked about a pool and had a meeting, and I was on the city council then. So I, this goes way back. First of all, I'd like staff to tell me, and I didn't know this, that we did not build the pool or pay for the pool at GT Bray. I didn't even know that until last week. I heard the school did for PICO funds or something? And with the agreement that we have to allow their school competitions for free, correct? How long ago did we build GT Bray?
1985.
1985? Okay. Okay. All right. And I have no, and you hit it, Commissioner Smith, right on the head. I have no problem, whatever we all decide, we're all gonna go, like the chair said, we're all gonna go back to our individual councils and see what we can do. I think that what's presented to us is fair to everybody. If the city of Palmetto will still do the 28% and we do the 71.667, fine. If that's what it ends up being. I have no problems with it being a five or seven, whatever the community wants. The three millions, unfortunately, with all the costs going up, forget it. I mean, it's embarrassing. It looks like somebody's pool in a backyard. So we all don't want that. But it is about, I know Commissioner Bellamy says it is, that the county can afford it. We all have to have some skin in the game with this, and that has always been the commitment of Palmetto since day one, since I've been involved. And their commitment was always 28.33%. So whatever we decide, we need to go back to our commissions and we need to decide. We've all wanted a pool. If anybody that says that we haven't, that's totally 100% not true. I've been here since day one. We're just, a recession hit and we couldn't afford it. And now we're back on the top of the saddle, and before another recession hits, we need to get this built. So I support whatever the commissions want and whatever. We're all willing to put our own skin in the game like Commissioner Smith just said.
Thank you. Commissioner Sylvia?
Thank you. So many great comments so far. I do have one question, and that is about the maintenance of the pool at $400,000. And I heard you say that that's an estimate, and that's for the $7 million option. Is that the bare minimum maintenance, or is that maintenance figure allowing us to put money aside for future capital needs and replacement items and things like that? Or is that just managing and running the pool?
That's staffing, managing, and running the pool.
Right. So that's really an unrealistically low number then because we probably should...
Not for maintaining the pool. If you're looking at renewing amenities and things like that, that would be budgeted on an as-needed basis.
Ed wants to inject something there.
We have experience in operating pools. We have Coach Clemens Pool, we have GT Bray, and we have Marble Pool. The staff came up with a number of about 350. I didn't want to go with 350 because we believe in under-promise and over-deliver. If we say 400 and bring it in at 350, people will be happy with us. If we say 350 and it comes in at 400, people will want to hurt us. So we understand how this works, but we operate pools. We know it's going to cost over time for the chemicals, the lifeguards, the cleaning services, the amenities that we need to take care of, that it'll probably cost between 350 and $400,000 a year. If you look at the difference in the pools between seven million and the $5 million option, as Tom said earlier, they're about the same size. You lose the international flavor, but are about the same size for dealing with college and high school competitions, and they provide enough swim opportunity for roughly the same number of children and families during the off-season. It's really a question of the amenities. And when I was talking to Commissioner Bellamy about this, I thought, we need to get the pool in the ground is the first thing. We can grow into things as, over time, as the future budgets come up, and start talking about improving the parking lots and improving lighting and other amenities. Get the basic amenities, but get the pool in the ground because you only have one chance to put the pool in the ground. Put the right pool in the ground. And we think the operating cost will be between 350 and 400,000. We'll go through that final numbers as we go through putting the budget together to look at exactly how many lifeguards we have. As Commissioner Bob brought up, one pool versus two pools. You think two pools are gonna need more lifeguards than one pool? Do we make one pool just bigger that you can do the competitive swim and the Learn to Swim in one facility, or do we need two pools? We kind of got hooked on two pools, but do we really need two pools? That's a discussion you all need to have. Can you do it all in one facility? The chemicals could be less, the workload on the staff would be less. It's discussions you need to have.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I really appreciate the philosophy of under-promise and over-deliver. So thank you very much. I want to agree with Reggie Bellamy. We have a responsibility to provide an excellent pool for Palmetto. It's been a long, long time. They say, "Big wheels turn slowly." Well, it's been at a crawl. And so the time is now. Having said that, I also understand, it's easy to say, "Let's spend the $7 million." It's easy to say that, right? But that's real money, and that's money that we gotta possibly take away from somewhere else. So my idea would be, just as Ed said, to grow into it, but have a realistic plan for providing the best facility that we can possibly provide for Palmetto. And that includes the kitchenette that's not included, and that includes the shade structures that aren't included, because you're gonna need that stuff. There's gonna be birthday parties and tons and tons of families there. So we need to have a plan to provide for that ultimately, and go ahead and build what we can build now with the money that everyone's willing to allocate, but let's get to a really, really fantastic facility for Palmetto.
Hold on.
I'm done. Thank you. And I kind of like going at the end so I can listen to everybody's comments. And you know, I have to think that, you know, we have one job by statute as a county commission, and that is to adopt a budget. It's the one job that we have. So we are responsible for overseeing, if you look at the statute, that's what it says our one job is, that we have to oversee the budget. And that means that we have to be concerned about budgetary issues. We can say we're gonna spend $7 million, but we're talking about things that are even left out that are gonna cost more. Realistically, it's gonna be more than $7 million if we're gonna have shade structures. And I think shade structures are essential. We're talking about doing this right. But we also have to consider, and can't help but think this way, I'm a planner, this is not a lot of land. We have to, we have to consider, the soccer fields are still gonna be there. The basketball still needs to consider. We cannot make this an international facility. There's not enough room. We can make it a competitive swimming pool with the right kind of amenities. We can make it a competitive swimming pool with the right kind of amenities, so that it can be something that we're proud of. But, we don't have unlimited space, and we don't have unlimited funds. We need to be realistic. We want to deliver this, we cannot, if you continually just shoot for the stars, that's what you're gonna get. You're gonna get a view of the stars. You're not gonna get something actually built. We need to have a realistic plan, how this can be accommodated, in the land that we have, and how, what is important. I believe shade structures are important. I agree with Misty, this is gonna be a community gathering place. It is today, you know? But, we have limited parking. I think we want to have, you know, the five million dollar pool along with some more amenities. And we gotta figure out what that's really gonna cost, and how we really gonna get this done. You know, we can't just continue to say what we, what we hope it will be, we've got to say what it will be, how much it's gonna cost, and then we gotta build it.
Mr. Williams?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry.
Good evening. I'm gonna give you a little history. Back in nineteen fifty-three, I went to Ballard School. When school was out in summertime, I climbed on a bus, and we went to Braden River on Highway Seventy, and took swimming lessons from the school system. The school system provided swimming lessons to Manatee County students. Then, they would take us two or three times out to the beach, and we'd learn in the saltwater, in the beach. This prevented drownings, 'cause we learned how to swim. The important thing here is, as far as I'm concerned, is, we've got to teach the kids how to swim. It's the kids that we're doing this for. We're not doing it for us. So, we're fighting over a little bit of a thing here, and it's not us, it's the kids that we're fighting for. That's what Palmetto's fighting for. Nineteen ninety-three, we'll move forward now. Commissioner Burton, or Councilman Burton, Councilman Smith, Charles, and Councilman Williams, myself, went to the county commission, and we wanted a pool. We asked for a pool to be built in Palmetto. We were willing to utilize, again, Lincoln Park back then. We had ideas that, where we could put the pool, we had other places that we were gonna put it. We got turned down, 'cause there was no money. All right? This was back in ninety-three. We just finished, it was back in eighty-five or eighty-four that GT Bray was done. Yes, it was done with something else. The county has grown tremendously, as we all know. However, we on north side of the river haven't gotten the amenities that have come up in the rest of the county. And you can't tell me that with the growth on north side of the river, that this county can't afford to put a pool in. What was your budget this year? Seven hundred million dollars? Our budget was twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars. Minuscule compared to yours. But, again, we're going back to money. Now, Palmetto cannot afford, in my opinion, to put in any more money, and this'll be an argument we'll have with my, my commission, but we can't afford to put any more money. Now, we got sixteen acres of land over there, that I think initially we offered to give you the whole park, and there's value to that, which, if you don't have enough room for, as Betsy's saying, for, um, an international pool, maybe the basketball courts could be moved into an area where you do have some additional land. But, we're taking a initial response from the City of Palmetto, which was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for an Olympic-sized pool, which is the same as these two pools that we're looking in, in at the five billion dollar budget item. So, we're, we're proposing a twelve thousand square foot pool, or twelve thousand, what, gallon pool? No, it's not twelve thousand gallons, it's twelve thousand square foot pool. And the two pools equal twelve thousand square foot, I think. So, we're, we're cutting it in half, basically, as far as the pool, the competition pool, and giving you the same amount of money, plus now you want another one point, one million dollars. So, I'm a little confused on what you're wanting to do here. You're wanting more money from us, and you're putting in a smaller competition pool. I, I'm not gonna go for it. This county can find the money. I assure you, one thing's gonna happen this year at one time. You're gonna need some money for a special project that's gonna come up, and you're gonna find the money. And don't tell me it won't happen, because we will sit there and be looking. So, I'm telling you now, this is that time, find the money now. I, I won't go into the rest of it, but, uh, there, there's plenty of things that, that can be said, but let's just get it done. Again, it's not for us, it's for the kids.
Thank you. Um, before we get to your question, we have Commissioner Bogdanor, um, we have another question, opinion on this, before we, we trend back.
Now, I just wanted to clarify some of the statements that were made earlier about the two pools, because, um, it was asked where that came from, and it was alluded to that it came from the City of Palmetto. Um, in the conversations that the commissioners had, we never discussed two pools at all. The two pools came into play when Charlie Hunsiger came to the commission on July seventeenth, twenty seventeen. There was a whole presentation done on the Lincoln Park aquatic facility. At that time, the county staff had came up with the ideal for the two pools. The commissioners never asked for two pools. That is what your staff brought back to us. And as Commissioner Williams was just stating, there are sixteen acres there. The motion that was made back in January, I believe, of twenty seventeen, was that the city would give eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would donate the four acres of property, which at that time was what they considered needed for it, and that we asked for an Olympic-sized competition pool. That was what the City of Palmetto asked to do. And now we are here, a year and a half later, and we're still talking about everything. We did ask for diving, but that was something that we didn't know if it could go or not. Um, because one of the things, I mean, as we're all talking about, most of us grew up here, and the late seventies, early eighties, Palmetto High School couldn't have a swim team, because we had nowhere to go. So, that was the main point of, um, the city asking for a competition pool. It's not so much for the Olympic international side, it's just for all the schools over here to have the same opportunities, because with all the added costs with the busing now, you can't bus the kids all over the place. So, all the new schools that are going north of the river, they need a place to have swim teams as well. Maybe it's something we can look at to talk with the school board, to see if they have any funds they could throw into this too, if it's used for something like Commissioner Whitmore brought up, um, maybe we can find some other funds. But, I do believe, um, we need to find the money, and I think it's time for this to happen for us. I mean, we've all sat here, he's talking about in the fifties, I'm talking about the seventies and eighties, and today, in twenty nineteen, we still have no pool for our kids to have competitive swim teams or anything like that, plus all the kids that are drowning. I mean, I just had one in my neighborhood. Would they have had a pool? I'm not sure of the age of the child, but we need to teach our children how to swim, and it needs to be at a good place. And I think we all agree on that. I think we just need to come off the money and all work together. If we put all of our heads together, between all of us, I'm sure we can come up with a solution for everyone. Thank you.
All right. I, I wanna talk about the one pool or two pools. Um, I'm not necessarily sure how it came up, but I do know, um, looking at the land, um, there's a stormwater pipe that goes up under it, and based on the dimensions, you know, of the pool, um, I think we had to look at, well, this is what, from what I understand, had to look at probably a split there, all right? And the split was the, the competition pool would be in one area, and then the recreation and the educational pool would be in the other area, um, from what I understand from the land. That's, that's why there was, there was a split there. Um, so, if we're, if we're looking at it from the competition stand, standpoint, um, based on the dimensions of the pool, it's not a, a, I mean, you won't have enough space to just put one big one, because of that stormwater pipe, all right? So, therefore, that's why it came. Now, that's the way it was explained, it was explained to me. I want staff to comment on this, so I can make sure, uh, we, we can hear from it.
Commissioners, um, it would be difficult to fit a large pool and the restroom, required restroom facilities, north of the stormwater pipe that the commissioner...
I, I just wanted it to be brought out. I mean, so, because, yeah, some, some people need, need, need to know that, as far as why, um, we came up with the, with the two of them, and how.
Now, that being said, well, um, I, 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 I have limited knowledge of how we came up with two pools, but I can say that if we wanted to have two pools or a, just one larger pool, we're not tied to the location on the north side of the stormwater pipe. We could shift to the other side of the stormwater pipe. One of the issues we have, and it's a site issue, um, and I didn't wanna get too far into the weeds, but we have, uh, a limited distance that we can get from our hydrant and our fire line, without having to cost a lot more money to install the, the appurtenances we would need to be able to provide fire protection as required by the fire department for the locker room area. So...
So, so, now, now we know how we got the two pools now, um, who put it out and did that, but there's a reason why. There, there's a reason why, um, we're, we're looking at the two. My, my, my last, um, thing that I, I think I'm gonna say, because I, I wanna make sure we move forward on this, is, we, we only have one time to do this. We only have one time to do this, and, and within our process of one time to do it, we don't need to just think now, we need to think about tomorrow also. Okay? Now, let me bring that back, not just today, but also the future. And one scenario that I wanna bring to everyone around the table, uh, you may have a nephew, you may have a niece, or a grandchild, or someone to move into the area, because growth is coming one way or the other, all right? So, we wanna meet growth where it is. If we have someone that comes in with growth and says, listen, my goal is to take to be the next competitive swimmer, and to take my high school team to a state championship with the swimming and things like that, should we forfeit them the opportunity, because we can't come together and collaborate and put something on the table to make sure that we give the competitive pool, the recreation part, and the education part within this one point? I think we have an opportunity to, and we should.
Okay. Commissioner Whitmore?
After hearing everybody, I'm kinda leaning towards, uh, the middle ground, the five million, because of the amenities. But, first of all, uh, we don't, and I need Ed to verify this, we don't use taxpayers' money to build pools, correct? Isn't that out of impact fees, and at this point, I mean, parks, 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 which was...
No.
The new ones that are coming up, like Lakewood Ranch, uh, there was one in Buffalo Creek at one point. No, I know you don't have a pool, but isn't that the only way that...
We put one in last night.
Ed, isn't that the only way that they could be paid? And we have, we pay for them out of general funds?
No, no.
We haven't?
We don't, we've never built the pool.
I know, that's what I'm trying, sorry.
We get a challenge of what money we use, we don't build. This will be the first challenge we have, we acquired, Charlie, can you, uh, the Clemens Pool?
How did they get paid?
Coach Clemens Pool?
I'm sorry, that...
Predates you?
Predates me. I can tell you though, the Marble Pool was built, the Marble Pool was built with county funds, I believe, uh, in the middle seventies.
Okay, so, we have had a pool, okay. So, forget my thought on there. I do remember that Palmetto, uh, the eight hundred and fifty thousand was over fifteen years, correct? Was that the agreement?
That was at one point in time discussion.
But, that changed?
I don't know.
I've been, I was told by staff at one point.
The question, what we would like tonight, is for you to discuss what you want. We'll go back and figure out the money at some point in time. The mayor and I will chat, and the city council will chat, and board will chat. But, what is it that we're trying to come up with in order, what do you wanna build?
Okay, well, now's the time we're all talking, so I'd appreciate everybody being treated, everybody respectfully, because this is the time that we all can talk without breaking the sunshine law. So, that's why I'm asking these questions. Some may think it's dumb, and some may not, so. Uh, the reason why the costs have gone up, is it, is it because of the cost of the construction of everything? I know Priscilla has a tree farm, and she's complaining about how much everything's gone up, just in her little business, so, you know. Okay, again, it's all, to me, it's about how we can all work together. I think we all, we gotta move forward. I mean, I'm, I'm sick of this, that we've been doing this for a long time with Larry Bustle in that room over there. We need to get off the dime and do something, but I think the boards need to get together, and it's can't be just the county's gonna pay, uh, everything except what was committed years ago. Uh, it's a lot more money than we planned on years ago, so I think if we wanna get it done, like we say, for the kids and the citizens, Brian, hopefully you'll think about it, consider it, my friend, my old friend. We all need to, uh, put some skin in the game, and, um, shame on all of us if we don't do this. This is gonna cost us more, and it's gonna cost the city more. But, if we want this, let's do it, and, um, hopefully we can come back together in a few months.
Mayor Bryant?
Just, it's, it's interesting, because this very week, um, our, um, our group, our, the commissioners and our department heads and I, we go out and, uh, visit mobile home parks, and, you know, subsequent, between now and March, we'll go out to every community development district, we go to every mobile home park in the City of Palmetto, and we try to take our show on the road, tell them what's going on, and we let them ask any questions that they wanna ask. Interestingly enough, at Tropic Isles, one of the questions was, I've been coming here since nineteen ninety-two, and I've heard and heard and heard about a pool. When are we gonna get off the dime? And, you know, that's, that's a really, it's, it just was really poignant, you know, that the community, really across the community, is asking that same question. I would tell you, um, earlier, 'cause I have a question that I wanna ask too, for clarification, but, um, it's clear to me, the three million is off the table. I mean, it clearly doesn't satisfy anybody or, or any of the criteria that we were originally going for. Um, I know, um, I strongly support, first and foremost, about the kids and teaching them how to swim, but while you're doing that, there's so much more that you can accomplish with this project. The, one of the things, and I think, um, I appreciate Commissioner Whitmore and Commissioner Bellamy, because I think what they're asking is, what can we agree on that we, you know, really all wanna go back to our individual meetings and discuss and come up with how we can pay for them? We obviously want all the amenities, because those are essential to being successful, to have, you know, parties and programs and competition there. One of the things I wanna know is, do, is there enough distinction, or is there enough need, because we talk about a competitive pool? To me, um, what I'm understanding, a competitive would be high school and college. And that makes a big difference about the pool, the meters and the yards, is what, what I'm told. How much of a difference does that make that alters what, what we're really looking at as far as the cost? Because clearly, that's a, that's a huge difference from what I am, I'm understanding. You know, there, there are two different benchmarks. So, I, you know, I'd like to see, I, I'd like to get the, the feedback from those people. I'm, I'm not a swimming enthusiast by any, by any means, but is it, is it imperative to have the Olympic pool? Or, because I think what we're looking at is for high school and college. So, I, I'd like to just, if we could come to a consensus on that, I think we could, you know, come down and narrow down, because I think everybody here wants to have the amenities. I think they, they recognize, if you don't have the amenities, you're not gonna have a successful project, you're not gonna have what everybody had. You know, we've had our eye on this, this, uh, moving target, but at the end, we're not gonna get what we went after if we don't have those amenities. So, I'd, I'd like to arrive at, which pool are we really looking at?
Vanessa, you're next on the list.
I think it's interesting, because one thing that you definitely hear from all of us that we all agree with, we need a pool. But, it's gotta be a pool big enough for the people to use, and what I've seen so far, it's not. The three million's definitely out. I do agree with the mayor, I was gonna ask that question, actually. I think we need to look at, um, you know, you talk about seven million, that figure keeps coming up. Well, I've got a feeling that, you know, it's gonna take seven million just to get a pool that is big enough to really use, and also to have the amenities included in. You can't have the pool without the amenities. It would be foolish. Uh, why are you gonna bother spending taxpayer money if you don't have everything there that you're gonna need in order for the people to enjoy themselves and be able to learn? I mean, I know a big thing... thing for me was giving the kids a place to learn how to swim. You know, then I, I'll be honest with you, the competition pool, I mean, I can see we're at high school and college because I've complained about that. Because believe it or not, where most of the growth has gone on in this county, we don't have pools. We have little tiny little pools in our backyard. I think parish, a lot of the homes being built have those. But, you know, we don't have a, a competition pool either. We need one. Not saying we don't. But, you know, I think we really need to concentrate. It's not an international type thing that I think we need. I think we need one to, to be able to have for our, our kids in school and our colleges, for our students that, you know, live here and, and need to learn and, and be able to have a pool to practice in for the swim meets and so forth. I think that is important. And we do have that at GT Bray and also John Marble. I could see the importance of having it in Palmetto. You know, I, I, I do believe that we all need to get on the same page and move this forward. Now is the time. We are this close. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can all agree. We all need to give a little bit. Not saying we don't. So does the county. So does Palmetto. But we all need to work together for the betterment of the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Well, most, most everybody's already said this around the table. We do need to build the best pool for this community, for Manatee County as a whole. Because this is going to be a stamp on the county saying, look, this is the best pool that we can build for our constituents. Talking about the water line or stormwater line, stormwater lines can be moved. But they can. I mean, it's going to, it'll cost, but it can be moved.
You want to pay twenty years' salary?
They can be moved. I mean, there's a lot of stuff. It's going to cost something somewhere. So, let's build this pool and do it right. And I think we can all agree that it'll be a great day when it does, groundbreaking starts. I'm ready for it.
Thank you. Priscilla?
Well, just to kind of move it on, my number one priority is capacity. I don't want a sixty-person pool that the kids are standing around waiting for somebody else to jump out. Number one thing is to teach the kids to, to swim and to let them have a place to recreate all summer long. So, if we're building something smaller than what you already have on the south side of the river, that's wrong. If you can get a hundred kids in a pool there, we should be thinking a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty. So, because we know we're growing. So, number one, we need to make sure we have a big enough pool to have enough kids in there during the summer that, that we can do. I think we should have the competition where the kids can. I'm not that worried about the international. If we have to give up the international, so be it. We don't have that many. Number two, that contractor needs to come back, and I know he's sitting back there. I don't understand how we started off with three million with everything we wanted because you told us nine months ago that you could do that. I'm in business. My expenses have not gone up almost triple. Thirty percent, yes, but not triple. So, I have a very, very, very hard time even talking about this because I like to work with actual numbers. What does this mean? You told me three million dollars. Now, you're at seven million and we still don't get what you said at three million. So, that contractor needs to really, when he comes back and we say we want a hundred and thirty kids, we want whatever it is we have to have for minimum on bathrooms, whatever we have to have for buildings. Well, by golly, whatever number you say, I'm holding you to it. I wasn't the one that talked to you the first time, but I'm telling you, I expect that number to be correct. I want to know if this is a five million dollar pool, a seven million dollar pool, or a twenty million dollar pool. I don't want these imaginary numbers. I don't think Steve Johnson does either. Doesn't work in the banking area. But number one is get the kids in the swimming pool. Let's teach them to swim and let our high schools work out.
Thank you, Priscilla. Commissioner Cornwell?
When we're talking about competitive and the motion that was made and already approved by the county commission, competitive included the dive well. And the reason that we were talking
Wrong. The city did.
The reason that we were talking about the dive well was that there is none in the county at all. And so, with building the new hotel, what the dive well would do, it would allow us the opportunity not just to do swim competitions, but diving competitions that just aren't available in our community. So, you're already digging a hole. You're only talking about increasing some depth and so forth in areas. And I, I know you're disagreeing with me, but we certainly can pull the minutes from that meeting. We also did not agree to twenty-eight point thirty-three percent. We agreed to dollar amounts. I don't know where that came from, but that was not something that the city of Palmetto said. Do I think everyone's going to have to spend some more money? Yes. But we talked dollars. We didn't talk percents ever. That's the first time I've ever heard that. Let's talk a little bit about parking. We have a tunnel and a huge amount of land on the other side of that tunnel, for those of you who do not know the Lincoln area, because I was there for nineteen years of my life teaching. So, I'm telling you, there's parking space available. Already hard paved parking space. Not only does it make that wonderful, the tunnel now becomes again active. And then that can be used for concessions, for all kinds of, of opportunities for, you know, all of us to make some fundraising. So, when you talk about parking, you need to look at that facility as a whole because there's a lot of parking over there. But again, with the hotel coming in, think about it. Do we not want to accomplish an opportunity to be able to fill that hotel as much as we can? And how much closer is that pool than that hotel that's right here and near the civic center that we're building? So, let's look at that opportunity and look at what we need to do for our students, for competition, and the fact that we have the funds now. Let's make the facility one that, that we certainly can. I know we have a little disagreement on that, but it just makes sense. You know, it makes a lot of sense to do it now while we're putting that, because look where it's located. Okay? You can drive right through from Hillsborough County easily. Okay? It's a great location for going by. And look what it's going to do for businesses and business opportunities. I mean, it will just, it's a win-win situation. So, thank you very much for listening to me. I hope that we can come to an agreement.
Thank you. Betsy?
Yeah, thanks. You know, again, we all adopted our budgets. We all have looked at every tax dollar, every tax dollar and where it's going. We've put together, because we did get the half penny, half penny sales tax for infrastructure, and every one of us put together a list that has been presented to the public that they voted on that did not have this pool on it. The list would have to be amended to transfer money. I'm not saying it can't, but that's a promise that we made to our constituents and we have to do it. We have to look at this from a countywide tax revenue. We've not built a new pool, but we have a revenue source for parks. It's called park impact fees. And we have to put that revenue source to where the growth areas are in the county. We're doing that. We put together a budget, talked about a number. We had a number too. We had the number, three million dollars minus your eight fifty. That was the number we were given. That's the number, what we adopted our budget. That's what we knew we were dealing with. So, now we know we're dealing with something between five and seven million dollars. We got to come up with that money and we're hoping that you have to come up with that, your share as well. That's just reality. I don't think the idea that the county has unlimited funds is real. I hear it all the time. I see people come to our meetings and tell us that. I can tell you that our budget people tell us that's not true. That's not factual. And we do have to answer to every single constituent in the county about where they're, we're spending their ad valorem tax dollars. Same thing with impact fees. We have to answer to all of the folks that pay that impact fee. Where do those impact fee dollars go? What impacts are being caused by the growth of that housing? And how are we meeting those impacts? That's just reality too. I think we're talking realistically between five and seven million dollars. We've got to come up with a real number because we're talking about a pool that will have enough space to accommodate the expected need and to accommodate practice and high school meets. Not a dive well. We never voted on a dive well. I remember being at the meeting when we got back to, after our summer break, and the city sent us a letter saying it had a dive well in it. I brought it up at our board meeting. I said, we never had a dive well in the plan. The city voted to have a dive well. I saw that. And I said, we need to respond to that letter. We need to respond to that letter because there's no dive well. Part of the problem with the dive well is because we do have a significant hardpan in here. You're talking about a hole. Holes are not easy to create sometimes in Florida. We have sometimes real issues with creating deep holes. That and the cost, we, we were told was not going to make a dive well, something that could be accommodated in this pool. I know we've, the city has talked about it a lot. I get it. You know, that would be great to have another dive well. But at some point, we have to have a realistic budget so that we know what we're talking about, we can find the funding within our budget. It, it just makes sense that we do that and move forward. And I'm going to say again, that we need to, we need to build in these amenities. They're not in the budget now. We need to build them in so this will be something that we are all proud of.
GTDE has a Okay, thank you. I'm actually next on the list as I'm, hopefully, we try to wind this up one way or the other at some point. But, you know, sitting back, listening to everybody discuss it, I think what we need to do is give, you know, direction back to the staff as to what the, all of us seem to feel here and, and kind of writing that down. I, you know, to me, it's, you know, we want to see them come back to us with a pool that's compet, that can be a competitive pool. I think we want to see a pool that's got full amenities to it so that it can be used as a recreational area for families or when it's not being used as, in a competition area. And obviously, you know, money's a big issue. And, you know, I mean, I think, you know, we all would like to drive around in big Mercedeses, but sometimes, you know, some of the, a good Chevy works pretty well too, type of thing. But I don't think we want to end up in a Ford Fiesta because that wouldn't be right to the citizens, you know, here in Palmetto and in the county. So, I, I think, you know, ultimately, you know, the, the commission, Manatees Commission, we needed to go back and, and our staff needs to go back and kind of have that direction and then work with the city of Palmetto and then try to come up with the pool. Like I say, maybe we can combine them and so we can have a, an area where we can have a walk-in area for the young kids so they can learn how to swim and then have that combined with the competition area. So, you can, you know, you don't want them in, the, the young children in there learning how to swim when you got, you know, kids in there compete, competing. And likewise, they don't compete twenty-four, seven. So, hopefully, you know, there could be some trade-off there. It's like a double usage of that pool. And I think that would be important to me if that's a feasible type of alternative to it. And to me, again, I think, I'm hearing from all you all, amenities is, is a major consideration, you know, because you, you know, it does get a little warm here in July and August. And, you know, if you're going to be out there in the middle of Lincoln Park, you probably would like to get out of the sun for a while, especially if you're a parent. You know, putting the, as my parents did, put, you know, Coppertone forty-two inches thick all over me when I went to C S Stiki as a young man. So, you know, those are kind of my comments and, and I think we just have to, you know, we've got some more people here that want to speak, but I think, you know, if we can just kind of direct our comments as to what you'd like to see the, your staff do and what we want to see our staff do, we can, you know, you know, get, get some new information. And then I think it'd be appropriate for us to get back together and look at it at that point. And then again, we've got a golden opportunity now. You know, as somebody said, you know, we're, we're really close to the goal line here, you know, and it's been way too long in coming. So, let's push this over the, the goal line and, and, and get it started, you know. It isn't getting any cheaper as we know. And as Priscilla said, we went from three million to five million to, I hate to think what it might be, you know, by the end of the summer. So, I think the sooner we get it and get the ball rolling, the cheaper it's going to be for all of us and especially for the taxpayers in the long run. So, those are my comments. And next up is Reggie.
Mr. Chair, I raised my hand a couple times.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll let you butt in line. How's that?
Okay. What I need to know is what the difference between the international pool and the high school competition pool? Can anyone tell me that?
High school and collegiate pool can, competition can take place in a twenty-five yard long lane, twenty-five yard pool.
Okay. The something I mean right there is that for international pool?
It's a twenty-five meter distance. It's like the hundred yard dash used to be the, it's now the, you know, meter dash. But international competitions rotate around meters rather than yards. And so, if you have a twenty-five yard pool, it's not long enough to handle a international or Olympic competition.
No, no. I'm saying just high school competition.
High school and college both, twenty-five yards, which is what the
Another one is twenty-five meters, you're saying?
A twenty-five meter is for Olympic competition.
Okay, so all we need is twenty-five yards?
All you need is twenty-five yards for high school and collegiate.
I think, I'm pretty sure that county can get together and come up with their amount. The city itself, you know, we don't, we ain't, we're not big like the county. So, I know if we can come up with our part, I know y'all got to be able to come up with y'all part. That's what I'm looking at, you know, and we need a pool for competition, high school, college. That's what we need. And I'm pretty sure we can get together and get that done. You know, we can keep on coming to meetings and meetings and the pool going to get higher, it seemed like to me. That's what it seemed like to me. And we need to get a price on that high school pool competition and for that college pool competition. That's what we need, that's what we need a price for. Not the international. We need a price for that. But that's what we're looking at. High school competition and college. So, they can have meets and everything there. And the kids from our community can learn how to swim and have competition meets right there from our community and actually for the whole, whole county. We getting bigger and bigger. So, that's when I think we should get together and get that done. That's it.
All right. A couple of things. It was tossed around that maybe the location may change as far as, we have the option to change the location, not from off the site, but where we put it on the site based on the size. If that comes up as an option within the dollar figure that we have, when we come back to the table, could we please make sure that the contractor, you know, have that so we can all see the location change and things like that? That's, that's the first thing. The, the, the second thing, as far as how do we move forward, looking, looking at the numbers, as I'm not sure, ma'am, where, where the percentages come from, but I think the, the reality of it is, is that the accountability piece is, you know, the county has their seventy-eight percent and the city of Palmetto has their, I mean, seventy-two and then twenty-eight. Are, are we still there? I'm just, I'm just curious. But no, that, that needs to come on the table. We don't, we don't need to walk away and act like that doesn't exist. We need, we need to make sure before we leave here. Now, the conversation was stated as far as you agree to the dollar amount. And I'm not sure how it came up to percentages, but the way I guesstimate is whatever the dollar amount was, all right, they came up with that as their percentage. And as the numbers continue to take and get a little bit higher, you still identify what that twenty-eight percent was, okay, from the county standpoint and the city standpoint. Am I correct on that, staff?
You are correct.
Okay. So, with understanding that, with understanding that, where we are right now, the, the county has agreed a seventy-two percent, not a dollar amount, a seventy-two percent. And we need to make sure that the city of Palmetto, all right, the city of Palmetto has a twenty-eight percent. And, and the reason why I'm saying that is I, I don't want to walk away and we're trying to figure out, you know, what, what, who has what skin in the game. We, as this workshop right here, need to put that on the table and make sure it's very clear when we walk away, all right, okay, the county's going to have their seventy-two percent and the city's going to have their twenty-eight percent. When the number increase, because we already know it's going to increase. We already know the number's going to increase. So
What we're looking for is high school. We want to see that for the high school and for the college, not for the international competition. That's what we're looking for. And then we get together, you can get with your commission, we're going to get with our commission. We're going to vote on that. That's how we do that. That's how we do things around here.
That's what I just said.
That's what you said.
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about right. So, before we leave here, I thought that's what you
Well, what I'm saying is to agree to the percentages, the skin in the game. What the city of Palmetto skin in the game will be? city of Palmetto's skin in the game will be and what Manatee County's skin in the game will be. That's what I'm saying. That's what we need to deal with before we leave because when everyone go back, we have to take a meet with our county administrator and look at the numbers and everything like that, and I'm sure the city of Palmetto has to do the same thing. But are we obligated? Are we going to hold tight obligation or are we committed, shall I say? That's a bad word. Are we committed to the 72 from the county and the 28 from the city?
I don't want to talk for the city, but one thing I want to say is we need to know what the price is before we can commit to any percentage. Y'all got money? We don't have the same money y'all have.
Yeah, we're saying the same thing, but we still need to make sure we're going to commit to the percentages.
I'm going to say again, we're not going to commit to percentage.
Excuse me. I'm next.
Yeah, it's not a vote. Okay.
I'm next to speak. Are you through?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to comment. I think we've made great strides today because I know when all this started, I kept hearing competitive, high school, college, Olympic size, the difference in the meters and the yards, and that makes, that makes a difference. We've made some strides. I think there's pretty much a consensus on that. The one other thing that's kind of like a hanging chat is, do we, is it the consensus for a dive well or not? And so that's something maybe that each board has to go back and talk about. It was of interest to the city commission, to the board in Palmetto. The way that it came up, the percentages, was just for really guesstimating moving forward because based on what we initially talked about, Palmetto's was like 28-point-something percent of the total. And so they were just basing the calculations to move forward if that was just a sliding scale that moved forward. So naturally, we can't commit if it was three or five, I mean, I think three is ridiculous, but going to $5 million or whatever, you know, we have to go back and look at our funding. We did not, when we went out and spoke everywhere, we didn't talk about the half-cent sales tax for a pool either. And unlike the county or city of Branton and some of the others, the funds that we get from that are much more restrictive. Total over the 15 years, ours is not quite $15 million. So we have a lot of roads and we've had parks we've had to take the equipment out of because it was so, in such poor condition. So I would tell you from that standpoint, we've got to look at our funding sources, but I'm hoping in making a decision, a finite decision, dive well or no, adding the amenities, and if even it's possible, as far as what Commissioner Cornwell mentioned, the parking across the street. Of course, that's school board property, but they should have some skin in this game. And obviously, back in the day, it's just like Mr. Williams pointed out, they did. They were part of educating. But on this, even though that's school board property, it should maybe be a player in it, and maybe that's something that we could seek out. Exactly. And I think they're, I think they're, I think they're on board with moving forward on that as part of their overall project. So, but I think we've made a lot of strides today, and the one thing I do want to do, I'd like to go ahead as soon as possible, set the next meeting, and let's get this done. I wish I could do that motion, but we want to, we want to get this done and we want to be digging dirt and having the big party out there. And it'll be a big party. So anyway, but if we could, if we could set it up as soon as possible and come back to the table and get it done.
I'm out of order, but also, are there going to be bleachers? Because we're going to definitely need bleachers for something of this. There will be? Thank you. I'm sorry for being rude. Good evening.
Your logic, you tackle us.
Commissioner Cornwell?
Well, we're talking as if the citizens of Palmetto don't pay county taxes. We pay what everybody else in the county does. Our citizens pay extra tax to be a city. So our city's one of the oldest in this whole community. Every park, every pool, every dog-walking park, everything the city of Palmetto has contributed equitably to every county citizen. So when you say your money, our money, your money is our money. For 100, over 100 years, we have done that. So you seem to have lost the fact that your money that you have, as Ms. Benak was saying, you've gotten many, many dollars from this city to help support the other community and the growth areas. What we're asking to come back is, you know, if I were to even, let's put a percent on it, an interest rate, on the percent of money that we have, you know, given to the county that has gone out of the city. I mean, if you think about that and the age of the city, you can understand that there's a difference. So don't think that your money isn't our money, because it is. Everything that you spend is money our citizens have contributed to for far before Lakewood Ranch was ever thought of.
Oh, I knew that was...
Far before many of the beach amenities were thought of.
Okay, let's stay on track here. You know, we're getting off a little bit.
Well, I'm staying on track because Ms. Benak opened the door on that, and I'm sorry that that...
Okay, we'll finish up quickly.
And secondly, when we're talking about years, Ms. Whitmore mentioned that it began with Mayor Bussell. It didn't. It began long before that. So, but I've been here before you were here. So what I'm saying to you is it's long before that. This has been over 20, well, 25 years? Something like that? 30 years?
Longer than that.
So... The point is, we all want the same thing. I'm not disagreeing with that. But statements are made without consideration of how our citizens feel, because that's how we feel, that it just keeps going out and the money doesn't come back equitably in just because of the number of years that we've committed.
Okay, Betsy, you can have a minute rebuttal.
Thank you. My minute rebuttal is I'm excited about the money that does go, county taxes, because they go to the CRA. And the CRA has an opportunity to participate and make this a wonderful facility, because that's where the county tax dollars go, to your CRA. So it's important, and I'm looking forward to that. And I know you have made commitments to the hotel. I really know very little about the hotel. I knew a lot more about the last one, but I know that's a very exciting time. This is an exciting time for this entire area. We partnered together on this grant. I'm excited that DOT has committed to improving this tunnel. The opportunity, I always, I always praise the city for the ability that they have to get grants. You guys are rock stars when it comes to searching out for other money. But certainly, the CRA is a mechanism that was put in place to capture those county tax dollars and keep them in the city. So we've got real opportunity to work together, and let's do it.
Commissioner Williams?
Pass the mic back and forth. I just want to say that the focus that we need to do is keep this in mind, that this is for the entire county. That's all it is, is for the county and for the kids. I will stick my neck out right now and say that this will be an item on our next agenda, and we will discuss it. We're going to try to finalize what we can do and probably get the messages through the mayor back to you all.
Carol?
Thank you. And a good idea about the tunnel. That was a great idea. But as a former city commissioner and a mayor of a city for 16 years, I get where you're coming from. But then I got in this world, and it's a whole different picture. It really is. A microcosm of, you know, what I had before. So I get what you're saying. I've been here. I've been complaining, griping to the county for years when I was on the other end, and then I had my eyes open on this end. But there is a dive well, guys, in Manatee County. It's at GT Bray. We haven't mentioned that. We heard that there wasn't. There is.
Competitive?
They do have to close the whole pool down. Yeah. Yeah, they have to, yeah, we have one. Charlie Hunziger said we do. They have to actually close the whole pool down when there is a dive event. Everything has to be closed down. So when we're looking at what we're doing, let's think about this. Okay, mayor and Ed are going to get together and come up with another work session. We're going to talk about this at our meetings. But I am going to tell you, I can't support anything without support, more support from the city of Palmetto if we do go for the $5 million, which is kind of what Harold's talking about, which has a collegiate and high school competition. Ray Fusco, a lot of you know him, his grandson, he drives them all over, all over, because there isn't enough pools to do, he's in high school at Manatee, I think. He's on some weird name fish, swim team, goes all over. And they even have to go to St. Pete Clearwater because there's not enough places to compete. So this is, I think, what we're all looking for, and I agree with the mayor. I think we actually finally narrowed some of the stuff down.
Thank you. Any other questions? Adjourned.